Yeah, I think that's it. I thought that was the one where there's no moving.
Yeah, for you.
Yeah.
Part of the pressure, right?
I want, I want to get that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just what they call that line space.
I don't know if you can see me.
And it's kind of same.
Good.
It does make that more.
Keep down. But I think that's much discussed.
All right, at six o'clock, let's go ahead and get the meeting started. Let's go ahead and open it up with prayer. I appreciate everybody being here in the second prayer meeting. Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We ask that you watch over our community. We ask that you watch over our city. We ask that you watch over our decisions, that our decisions continue to glorify your name. Jesus' name I pray, amen. All right, first up, Mr. Alan Burton.
Yes, sir. Can I just sit here? You want me to stand up here?
No, no, you're fine.
What I'll do is I'll sit here and I'll kind of talk to everybody in the room. Okay. Just wanted to give kind of an update, a little six month review of kind of where things are. Um, city's pretty healthy, really. I've put together, you guys have it, everybody here doesn't, but I've got Megan to hand you a summary sheet like this here, if you look at it.
Yes, sir.
And this is just comparing the first six months of this year to the last six months of the prior year of the same period. And, uh, you know, last year, if you remember when I was here, one thing I said we probably need to do, even though it's not always, uh, fun to the community is we need to go up on water rates. Um, cause you know, cause at the time, you think about it with inflation the last few years, everything's went up. So everything the city has to buy to maintain costs a lot more money. The only way we can do that and survive is we gotta go up too. So as you see over on the right, if you compare January to June of twenty five to January, June of twenty four, you can see that our water revenue and sewer revenues up almost twenty five, thirty percent each. And, uh, that's a good thing. We had about three point five million in, uh, revenues from water and sewer sales from January, June of twenty five, whereas this time last year, that's two point seven. Now, don't get too happy with that because expenses are up too. So it's not like we necessarily make, you know, we're six hundred thousand ahead of where we were last year. But still, if we hadn't done that, we'd be in a hole. So I commend you for, you know, making tough decisions and doing what needs to be done to, to, uh, be successful with the city. Then if you look down in the second section there, we put together some cash and just compared the cash to last year. And you can see it's, uh, your total cash is up about three hundred seventy thousand compared to last year this time. That means you're not spending everything you're bringing in actually, so that's a good thing. And then, uh, the advanced general, y'all always have, we talk about this every year, but City of Demers is unique because y'all have a lot of water customers. And City of Demers is a city where typically y'all's water carries you general sometimes. So y'all typically have to transfer a good bit of money funds to the general fund from the water fund. And as you can see, that trends more than steady as to what it was last year. The numbers are pretty close so far. You've transferred about seven hundred and some thousand, that's for the first six months. Then splosh revenue, splosh revenue's up about almost seventeen five, a little over seventeen thousand five hundred from last year. You brought in two hundred and three thousand at this point. And then we had a little thing at the bottom, some salary comparisons, you know, your salaries are up about seven point four four percent. But that's okay, uh, with inflation, you need to do that. And then at least your water rates were increased more. Now, if you'll look, I also gave you a prior year comparative income statement. This comes out straight out of your system. Um, after we make adjustments, you can run any of these reports, Megan can run any of this for anybody that wants to see it in more detail. But up to the right in the comments section, I had a few things I just wanted to bring to your attention. Um, so for instance, property taxes, they're up from last year, what you collected last year this time, you collected two thirty nine. Right now, you've collected three hundred thirty five thousand. Uh, there'll be more to collect in November, December. There's always a stagger with property taxes because it comes November, December, January, February is when most of the money comes in. So there's some overlap from one year to the next. So there'll be some more funds. If you look at the budget, there it shows four seventy one. And you may say, well, we're going to draw in, um, three thirty five. Where's that difference? That difference will come over in this one. You'll see that later in the year. So that's just to let you see kind of where the property taxes are and all the other revenue accounts. We noted a couple of things out to the right for, uh, Miss Lance revenue. Last year, y'all changed insurance providers, I think, and, uh, you've got a big refund from Travis Insurance, about forty something thousand dollars. Remember that? So that's why there was more in Miss Lance income last year than there is this year. Uh, twenty five, let's see, there's some L M money, you got a little extra L M money this year than you did last year. So that's why that's up forty five thousand. Then if you look at, uh, look over to the next page, looking at some of the expenses, you'll see that, uh, July fourth celebration, there's fourteen thousand seven sixty in there, and this time last year it was forty four thousand. Well, there was thirty two thousand dollars of taxes made in July. So if you look at July, you're gonna see they lined up really closely. It looks like right here from the six month comparison that you're about thirty thousand ahead of last year, not spending as much. But in fact, you're gonna be about two thousand more spent in the prior year for July. Um, and then in capital outlays, we have about forty thousand sitting in there. That's mainly work on the pavilion, which you have. And then if you flip to the next page, you'll see another section for capital outlays, and that's the radio system. Um, that's what forty six thousand of that sixty thousand is. And then y'all bought some, uh, first payment on those plate readers. And that's fifteen thousand of that.
And that radio was taken out of the ARCA money or the remaining money that was due from the police department radios. So we're a hundred percent paid on police and fire.
ARCA money, any of that left or is all?
There's a little bit left.
A little bit left.
Still working through that, those numbers to be done with this year.
Yep, that needs to be spent by the.
Yeah, we've got all that listed.
Yeah, good, good. Um, then if you look down repairs and maintenance, you'll see that repairs and maintenance is up some. Well, twenty three thousand of that cost is, uh, the mold, a mold mediation, which had the fire department, don't remember that.
Yeah, we added in the fire and the basement of the police department.
And then if you flip to the next page, uh, again, timing, paving and sidewalk, we don't show anything there right now. Last year, we had thirty some thousand in that account, you know? Um, so that's just a few things I wanted to bring your attention. And if you, if you keep flipping on, you'll see out in the margins, the comments, and any of this information is available. Anybody who wants it, you guys, you know, Megan can make copies and give, you know, whoever can use it. Obviously, it's a, it's an open book. Um, so, uh, but if you look through here, you'll just see some of the, uh, comments. If you look at the next page, you, we got it broken down by the downtown development, splosh fund, and then next the water sewer. And what I was talking about a while ago was mostly the general fund stuff. Um, splosh fund is one of those things, you bring in splosh every month. Uh, whether you spend it all or not is up to the city and what capital improvements you need to qualify. And you look right here, for instance, you'll see there hasn't been a ton of expenditures in that splosh compared to last year. I mean, if you look at the twenty four column over there in splosh, you'll see last year you brought in a hundred and eighty seven. At this time, with issues, you brought in two oh three at this time.
We budgeted, we budgeted thirty thousand a month, and we're hitting about thirty six to thirty seven a month.
Good, um, the expenses, the capital outlays right now so far, obviously, we got our e-bumper payments, but there haven't been a lot of other expenses yet out of splosh money.
Right, and the, the engine truck is ninety four thousand, and it has one payment left in March of twenty twenty six. And there's forty six thousand with one payment left on the police cars.
Yep.
So they'll both be paid for in twenty twenty six.
Very good.
In splosh.
And if you look at down below that section, the water sewer section starts, and you'll see there where that, those water sales, where the rate increase, that revenue's up about twenty nine percent, two point three million to three million oh nine, which is what I kind of mentioned on that very first page over somewhere. You flip to the next, you'll see, uh, Miss Lance revenue, current year included a thirty two thousand dollar.
As in insurance free loan, does that ring?
That's correct, that's off the health insurance. We had a shared agreement, we split the difference of our savings, but of course, they're no longer offering their services to this house. So with our current one, we do not, they do not offer that saving. So that would have been roughly sixty four thousand dollars. The city employees were healthy and, um, they did not have to spend their, what they had rejected.
That's good, good, good that the employees were healthy last year. Um, and then if you look at state government grants there, you'll see that you got your first payment there from the lead and copper grant.
Yep.
To apply for, so that's forty two thousand there. And I won't waste a lot of your time, main thing is I want to get this in y'all's hands. If you flip down, you'll see some of the, uh, explanations for why there may be some account differences in the expenses. Most of it's normal fluctuations. Um, I will point out, if you look at repairs and maintenance to the system, you'll see that's up quite a bit. It says that the current year includes a hundred forty nine thousand, data radios and new replacements.
Yeah, and, uh, we had two pumps go out in Demers Elementary and South Have Livestation. And those were twenty seven years old, lifetime is twenty to twenty five years. And they cost twenty eight thousand for one and forty two thousand for the other. And that's one thing that we'll be having in the budget is having these in inventory because we had to do an emergency to locate these and get these approved. Because we, nobody knew that this problem is, we are not maintain, we have not been maintaining these in past years.
That's right.
And so we got full service out of them. So.
Again, another reason why we need to increase water rates. I know, uh, you know, people don't want to hear that, but it's something you gotta do. Um, Baldwin, another reason, if you look down there in oil water and Baldwin water, you'll see that their expense went up. They charge more as well. So it's costing the city more when they buy water from them as well. So since they increase their rates, obviously, we gotta pass that through and increase ours too.
Dakota charges twice as much as Baldwin. And that's where we get the Baldwin water, um, where we get two million gallons a day. And Dakota water is one million gallons, so it's double the cost.
Um, capital outlays in the water section, if you look down there, you'll see you've got fifty six thousand for a Bobcat excavator that you bought this year. Forty two thousand for F one fifty, thirty nine thousand for equipment.
And the, um, Bobcat, um, backhoe, that was using the G plant grant for copper and lead. They would not, we did the work ourselves, we could not reimburse ourselves from that hundred thousand dollar grant, but we could do fifty percent of the grant amount to purchase new equipment. So we traded in the old one and got the other one where that grant led me back to that.
I've done a good job applying for grants for this stuff, and so, you know, keep doing that. If you look at repairs and maintenance to the system and, and this section as well, on the last page, you'll see the twenty eight thousand was spent on the Demers Elementary Livestation and forty two thousand in South Had Livestation. So that's just some things that point out that happened in the first six months. Um, another thing I want to mention, just real quick, I know y'all just recently got your seven month report for July. And I did want to mention that right now at the end of July, you have three point three five four million in the bank. That's all accounts combined now, that's general, water, it's everything. Um, now, a lot of that money's committed, obviously, you know, you got, gotta pay your folks, you've got payments on equipment and stuff that you have to make every month. So it's not like that's three point three million, all just sitting in reserves to do whatever you want with. But still, it's a lot better when you can say that you're healthy and you got three million in the bank. And one other thing I want to mention, if you look down at the bottom, where you ever will have this, but on your seven month report that y'all get, um, we always have the number of months of liquidity based on your total cash. And if you look at that compared to last year, that has gone up. Last year it was three point one nine, and right now it's three point eight one. So you almost have four months' worth of liquidity if things work out south. So I just encourage you to keep being gritty and smart with your money, but keep being proactive and, you know, because it's favorable to the community, the lower rates, we all know that in today's society, unfortunately, all things are being up. So you gotta go up with it.
Yeah, the projections that we hear, they like to see liquidity is three to six months.
By now, you're almost at four.
Yep.
Which is a lot better than when we first started, right down there at the two, two thousand or so. Um, you got a little healthier. If you look through July up to this point, you're in the positive. Um, you're about a hundred and one to the good in governmental funds, that's combined in the downtown development, splosh, then the general fund. And then on the, uh, the proprietary, which is the water and sewer, you're a hundred and fifty two to the good. And that's all through the end of June. So right now, for the first six months, you're in the positive, in water and in general. Um, water always would be even more positive, but we have that big transfer that goes to general. So that's the expense for water income to the general.
And with that, I can tell y'all that I have not asked for any reserve money to be spent since I've been here. And that's where I'm very cautious, and we have not touched a penny of those reserves.
That's good. And I do want to brag a little bit real quick, just to make how far she's come. Um, you know, gosh, when we first started helping you guys years ago, she was just kind of learning the ropes, you know? She got thrown to the fire, you know, she, she got thrown in the middle of all of it. And, uh, she, her and Mark both have done a great job, and she's very responsive. She, yeah, she asks us a question, we try to get back to her as quick as we can, and when we need something, she's good to get back to us. I know some people, you know, in my business, people will call you and they'll have a question for you. Well, that creates a question we have for them, and we'll respond, and it'll be two weeks before we hear from them. You know, they want something right then, but then it's two weeks before we hear it. And it's not that relationship that we have with City of Demers. Megan's always quick to respond. Um, one of my employees, Scott, he's a CPA, short guy, he, uh, he works closely with her. And Kelsey does a lot of reconciling a month, another accountant that works with us. And so, uh, I think y'all got a good crew. Um, Jerry and the council, they all do a good job. I think you're in a pretty good spot. Um, so I just wanted to say that. If y'all got any other questions for me, feel free to ask, if I don't have an answer, I can get you one. It might take a day or two, but I can certainly get you one if I can't answer it right now. But, uh, I know I threw a lot at you, I know y'all got bigger things to talk about, but I just really want to say, right now, you're pretty healthy. And you look better than you did this time last year, so I think that's a good thing.
Good, I appreciate you coming up with the budget that started, so.
Yeah. So.
Y'all have any questions?
Good. Well, I'm gonna get out and get back down and rub it, I got my house.
Is there a way to, yeah, to increase in rates for the water bill that's in a group? Is there a way to, uh, possibly take the elderly of the community that are on the, like, the social security check? And the rest of us elect to pay a little bit more on our water bill to help ease the burden on their, so just everyone's water bill? How to increase, like, can we make a little?
That might be a better question for your attorney, but I would think, I would think you couldn't discriminate. I mean, you know, you would, water rates are kind of one of those things that every citizen unfortunately has to pay.
Now, certainly the council could vote for such as that, but I don't know that that's really an accounting question. That's more of a, how does the city want to do business question? No, that's okay. I mean, if, I can't tell you that the city couldn't recommend that, but that would be something that they would have to decide as putting on account. I haven't seen any, any other city where they had rates. Understanding question. Yeah.
Thanks for asking the questions.
Can you speak up some?
A little bit.
You want to come up to the mic?
Well, it was discussed some time ago about purchasing or not, whether it would be good or not.
You talking about Gary's road?
Yes, it's, it's on the table for discussion, worth working through some ideas on that. It's still there, everything is still, we're actually doing, we're a meeting with Baldwin tomorrow.
So is that not a, a potential possibility to, to keep our water bills not going up so much or running down?
But it's gonna cost, it can cost three million dollars to do this.
Okay.
So that would be a, a cost associated with that. What it would give us.
It would be some long term.
Yes.
And what you will see is that we would own that million gallons going to their plant, which means if, and the only cost we would have is just water, uh, purification system. So it would not be a total charge like we have now. It would be calculated, just say it's fifty cents out of two dollars and fifty cents. So that would be that charge, so that water would be blended then into our overall rates. Because that, if we get two million gallons from them, their plant can do four million. And they only, right now, are doing three billion.
And that's, that's something great we're looking forward, you know, looking forward for seven, twenty years from now, that would benefit us. So, so.
Yeah, of course. It's basis, basically, basically, the more water we control ourselves, the more we have the ability to control rates because we are, you know, kind of, you know, handcuffed into the rates that, because we're not a big water, we don't have the water source, we're the water supplier. So we're buying a lot of water, and we're subject to, to the increases.
Yeah, by looking at our expenses, we're paying Dakota twenty percent more, so, than last year, so huge.
So, so obviously, you want to get as much as you can involved, you know? But I do think, from where I see it, you know, I, I have to tell these guys, you know, hey, you don't want to go broke. They're going up on you, you're gonna have to go up. Assistants over here, obviously, none of us did. But we all have been aggressive too the last few years, aggressive, everything's up. So cities operate the same way, if they don't go up on their rates, then they're not going to be successful, unable to survive. They wouldn't be able to provide you the things that you need as a, as a citizen, so.
And the, the agreements are January first for Baldwin each year and July first for Dakota. That's set in the contract. And so we're just now, there's a package in here. And so we're just now, there's a package in here to go up on, to little Vols water. So, because Toccoa went up on us, we have to, there's calculations from CPI, et cetera, that our engineers do that with. There's a formula that everybody uses, it's just not a random number.
Good.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good to see y'all.
I'll take care. Casey, do you want to do that now, or you want to wait till the seventh of August?
All right, next is this presentation of the parking lot landscape design, Mark, you want to take this?
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do y'all arrange a side of the trees after we're moving out?
It's a landscape plan, what I, what I told Mayor and Council that I would do. I would give them the design and I would have a landscaping plan. And I have not attended any meeting where these guys have voted.
So you can make, it sounds like you've made a decision to create a floor design. I just won't believe this.
No, no, there's no.
Thank you.
So with that, James Irving with Little Hills, come on up, James. Rhonda, can you put the concept, design concept plans? I know that's difficult, but it's as big as would you make it up to. I'll let James talk about it.
Okay.
And talk about the size and, and settle.
Okay. This is the landscape plan that was prepared by Mr. Bill Gresham. I haven't, had the pleasure of seeing this yet, but I can use this and use the overhead to discuss what we, what we had in mind for the, for this parking lot. So one of the first things you might notice is the drive into the parking lot, it is, it's long. And we did that for three reasons. Number one, DOT, they want at least a hundred feet from their road into a parking lot before there's any type of parking or maneuvering with, with cars crossing traffic, that sort of thing. That's for safety. Whenever you pull into a parking lot and somebody's pulling out somewhere else, you're pulling in, you're not watching where another car's pulling out. And that's the reason for that. Second reason is provides more landscaping area when you come into the parking lot. Is we're able to have more landscaping on both sides of the drive, so it provides more aesthetic. And number three, this allows us to keep the parking lot elevations close to the existing grade so that we minimize the earthwork and minimize the cost. We can be more aggressive with the slopes on driveways when they don't have parking alongside them. When you come into the parking lot, it's two-way traffic, but when you get to, you're gonna come in, you're gonna turn and as you start getting towards the, the building and towards the corner, it becomes one-way traffic. And we've got two lanes there, but it's, it's one-way traffic. And we've placed most of the parking spaces in this area at an angle on purpose. That way, we know that if somebody's, you come in here for the, the post office, that usually it's very quick in and out. This, you're able to park easily, then pull out a lot easier than your per piqued or parking. As you come around towards the portion of the, the building there that's horizontal, that I believe will be the post office area. We've got a large landscaping area there. That's where we'll have, the post office will have the mailboxes. So you can drop off things there outside of the post office. And then as you, if you come back out, we also have some overflow parking areas towards the, the road. And then probably some additional phase parking, a later phase there to the, to the left.
We've got that one up there, so if you wanted to show that one? Go ahead and show the second, Rhonda, please, ma'am. Oh, my, you didn't get my highlighted. So. Yeah, it's to the left, where that would be, could be a future parking and not do it all at one time.
So that's what that would look like if, if they did a, they phased this parking lot, they do a future phase having parking to the left there.
Rhonda, can you zoom it closer into just the parking area? Where you showing to the left right there where it's gray?
Yeah, you see the dotted lines?
That could be trees and shrubs.
Well, if we, I'm having on breasts, is what I'm, am going to ask. Because for a future, if we plant trees, we'll be back at the same boat again. So just landscape, just grass.
So in the, the, I'll call it the first phase, there are fifty-three parking spaces. In the future phase, there's thirty, I believe.
I have a question, is there anything on your hand where I can go along?
Yes, when we start working on the design, we, we have to provide stormwater detention. We have to ensure that the same water flow that's coming off there now, after we, after you do the parking lot, that it has to be the same as it is now. The stormwater runoff from this parking lot has to be the same as it is today. So what will happen is the stormwater will most likely go into an underground detention system. And we'll use that to hold the water and have a control device that allows the water to slowly come out. And most likely, the, there's a pipe under Florida Avenue and that's where a lot of the water is going today. And we have to ensure that we're not causing any adverse conditions downstream.
How quick. How many spaces are gonna be damaged by taking those beautiful trees down?
Well, there's, there's fifty-three there in the first phase and, and thirty in the.
Okay, I'm just trying to think about an alternative across the road. Where the parking lot, there's already a parking lot there that adds, gives me some room into trees up there, that's some kind of little thing. I assume that's city property, why couldn't the spaces go there?
Well, it's not my decision.
It seems like a good option to do that.
Well, that's for city council to, to discuss. That's also seems like a, quite a, quite a walk.
Well, it's just like people, you know, in downtown, that have actual downtowns, people always say there's no parking. They want to park at the front door instead of walk a hundred yards. But at mall, they'll park a hundred yards because they can see it. But this design is to utilize this space if they so choose to. And the, to put the parking in the back is, would be dysfunctional on this, on this design. If I took the, if you think about it, it's called the drip line. The drip line is, if the limbs go this far, you've gotta be outside that drip line. Which means as long as the limbs are, is how far you would be. We probably would get fifteen to twenty spaces to stay out of all those drip lines. By international building code, the post office has to have nineteen spaces.
Well, there are nineteen spaces right there.
But they'll access, their building is going to front, on the front side, and not on the backside of the property.
Post office has pretty specific instructions in their contracts as to where they want the parking to be.
Everybody who signed a contract with the post office.
We haven't signed with anybody, haven't approved anything. Well, but if that's what council wants to do, but since I have been here, the discussion has been move the post office.
Well, it has to be moved, we haven't renewed the.
Well, we could re, the DDA could renew it. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be moved. We, the city, the DDA could renew the lease.
Let's renew the lease.
The chairman of the DDA is sitting right there behind him.
Me. Jim Welber, I'm the chairperson of the DDA. Yes. And we have, we're about ready for the post office to get out of our retail space building, that's been there for a long time. We are here for economic development and purpose of the DDA, and we can make much better use of that building if it wasn't selling stamps. But if we had a restaurant or retailing, it'd be better for the city and them.
That's why there's no parking there.
Only more parking than everybody realizes, Jim, and that ain't count. And we have, holding the utilization after five o'clock of the people that park behind the other building. There are about eight parking spaces that could be utilized. But they can't, we have.
Well, I think now we should look at plans to, to move this forward. And looking at these plans and looking at the trees, one of my questions was, because I wanted to save the trees and we've been around and around about this conversation numerous times, is that hundred foot that the DOT wants to put that road into and turn gets inside the drip line of both of those trees. And if we go ahead and cut it in there and put it in there and say we leave the trees, the likelihood of those trees going to die is, is very high. Mark had an arborist come out and drill both of the trees and see how, how they were. One part is away from us, he said it has no roots on one side, it's going straight down on the ground, there's nothing that extends out and is in very high risk of falling at any moment. And he said, what did he say about that?
Well, the other one, he says the difference is, the trees fifty years ago, when everybody was playing under them, was obviously fifty years old. Tree's over a hundred years now. He said he would put his family to sit out underneath those trees for falling down.
Because they're a hundred years old?
Would he sit underneath them with his family?
Because they're a hundred years old?
He indicates that there's a lot of rock in the tree and then you're gonna have the liability of the car. I'm just telling you what the man said, lady.
Expect to life span a tree like that is about.
I can't hear you. Ma'am?
Could we get another opinion about the trees?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, if Alister has, they have company in her age, y'all already made them, what, twenty-five thousand dollars, but now it's three Gs. Trees, which aren't considered fireworks, though.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I, I keep trying to say something. What do you have?
Does anyone?
Thank you.
Does anyone have a concrete idea of how long the post office and where the city is going to begin this building period?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a permanent location.
Permanent, I'm sorry, permanently?
Forever.
There's no way the post office would be alive in five years. Like, maybe you're waiting.
They could, and your postmaster is sitting right behind you.
And this is solely for the post office to enter into this building and?
No, the, the postal goal is to move police department here to open up that space for something else that the DDA can lease for. And to move the post office here and centralize City Hall, which City Hall's already in this building. But right now, it's a pretty large building with just City Hall in it. And that way, we fill the entire building up. It would generate lease rates from the post office, which, just to be frank, they paid pretty well. And would help pay for these things for, for this center. And move the police department up here, so we're all under the same roof.
And really and truly, this is, I'm, I'm not saying this in an offensive way, this, this is the only or the best plan for parking that was submitted, or is it the only one?
No, it's the only one.
It's the only one?
This is just.
This is where it would naturally go, look into the front of the building. Now, again, if council wants us to stay where we are and council doesn't want the post office up here, we're fine staying down there. But if we, when you bought this building, that's a number of years ago, you're in ten plus to lease the building. Put some occupants in here, create some cash flow. Again, if you didn't buy, most likely, a developer would have bought this building and torn it down, built townhomes and on the ball field back there. And if you sold it to a commercial developer for office space, he's gonna come with the same request for parking lot in the front. Because that's where parking goes. So if, if, if we don't want to do the plan, don't, don't approve it. But if you want to do the plan and have all this activity up here, to grow downtown with another two or three restaurants and with the police department up here, you do the plan. Because this isn't any secret that the trees are an issue. This is no secret. My job as a city manager is to lay out the options. You got this option, or the other option is, don't do it. But you're not gonna move them up here and give them this parking space back here.
There's another option nobody seems to want to talk about. And that's moving the post office up here to this side of the building. Utilize the parking out here that's already here and leave that space and those trees alone.
So that's a great, that's a great point that we actually met the post office there, when they fly down here.
Yeah, you might have made that one.
Okay, so they, they flew down some boats and we walked all around looking for the best space. And what they need is a loading dock.
Right.
To, to put that in. And the loading dock that they're wanting, the engineer on this side is gonna eat up so much of this over here that it would have destroyed most of the parking back here in the back, back of it. And we would have had to put.
You're talking about a lift like they have back there in the back now?
They want an entry door, so, so. That's where they would have, on this plan, they would give the fourth classroom on the backside. And where that parking is on the backside cafeteria, that's where they would build their whole lift into that fourth building.
And they could build that lift into this side?
Well, the problem they have with lift is that there's a, there's a basement.
Right.
People that are there that they, that they couldn't work on.
The other part, Jimmy, is the mail delivery cannot enter through the same building.
It's gotta be private and.
As the customer. And that's the only entrance, unless you put a parking lot on the other side and you come in the other way.
Right.
And that's, look, we could go back and propose that to them, if that's what y'all love to do.
But it was a, it was a pretty hard node when I was trying to pitch that side of it. Cause I thought that was the best location for them too.
That's where we started that, we started and weren't there.
If that were proposed and accepted, would this road frontage have to be altered to such extent as it shows you? Or would, would this still be the main entrance so that people could have access to the post office around this way?
That would be their only entrance, unless something else was built.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you had something to say?
I'm just a little overwhelmed with, you know, our small town spirit, our small town vibe. And here we are, looking to destroy the front space. When you come over to the front, it's beautiful, you see it in this place.
Yeah, I tell you, the whole, that's fair.
It's not architecture, it's not you and you that. And it's, it's not worth to look at when you come down.
Now, I bet you, you can't hope that's fair.
But, yeah, like, we're using somewhere where some protection was lost that this needs to be preserved. This is a small town, this is what people want, I feel like many people want that. And yet, you're, you're, if people don't want that, then move somewhere else to be there. Then you have what you want, because this is a place where I'm raising my family, where I've grown up, eight generations plus of my family from here. And this is just a little alarming for me to see that this potentially option, there has to be something else. Whether, as you said, support, moving to City Hall and somehow making it possible for you to be there. It just doesn't seem reasonable just to open up retail space and a leisure restaurant. I just, I can't see that. I understand the ones that lease this building, but there has to be something else that can be done in order to prevent destruction.
Another point, people keep talking about the two trees. There's more than two trees that will be cut down. There'll be four trees cut down plus the ones.
I just can't, I can't rationalize that. For the development of an additional restaurant, you know, leave the post office where it is. I mean, you know, that solves a lot of problems. And then, you know, move something else in, I don't know, to this space that we're looking for. And then, you know, move something else in, I don't know, to this space that we're looking for, creating lease. There has to be other options besides destroying that space.
Isn't there a limit though of how much non-referent things can be in here because of the rate of?
Correct.
Can you play it to twelve percent?
Yeah, ten percent. So we cannot fill this building up, it has to be government up to ten percent. So ninety percent of this building has to be government, that's how we got the two and a quarter loan interest in this building. And that's how we obtained that. If we open it up to refinance it to seven or eight percent interest, it really doesn't, it really doesn't equate.
Well, the police department needs here, and that does screw up a space, and it requires all the destruction.
Except, except just the revenue that we would generate on the, on the post office. And that's what would help pay for destruction.
So, will the post office lease the SASS or if that's a temporary agreement for the city?
The one in downtown?
Right.
No, no, not as much. So their space was, was.
It's twenty-six, Jimmy, twenty-six hundred?
Yeah, we just went up to twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred times twelve right now is thirty-one thousand. The rate on this building on this side is fifty thousand four hundred for the same twelve months.
Well, what's the cost of this, we have that big?
Can't answer that question yet until we get this approved or not. Then James can continue working on a design, then it will be bid out. And so I have to have plans to have somebody bid it out.
It's all very, very preliminary, I'm just figuring out which is the next area to do.
I'm, I'm, I'm equally opposed to it. I was in this state.
This has to, on this project, the post office would be paying.
That they would be on, well, that's not on the disc, they're dead, which, so if I did, it's service dead.
I want to just ask you.
We just said we don't.
We can't, I don't know, we gotta bid it out.
And that's, that's.
Do you have any plans?
Idea?
James does this all the time, and the cost of move, we don't know. Like, asking somebody facts of what we want.
At one meeting, I was like, this is probably going to be somewhere from four hundred, five hundred dollars.
It might be in today's world, but I have to know the facts to then give them those facts.
You have to have some kind of logicizing, you know, get what we're, you know, giving up to get.
That's why we have to have, that's why I need move on with the project or stop the project. Well, the reality is, on fifty thousand dollars a year in, in cash flow, that can service seven hundred thousand dollars on a twenty-year amortization. And the amortization of twenty years would match the long term of the lease with the post office.
You're assuming the post office will.
I'm assuming the facts as I know them today. I am not gonna be begging and say they're going out of business, okay?
It's not a big thing to do this.
There you go. You don't know what they're gonna do in five or ten.
But I've got an agreement for now. I've got an agreement for now. For how long I can take, or the facts that I have on the table, I'm not making an objection whether they're gonna be here or not.
Right.
Who knows?
Preserving history actually attracts talent and investment into a small town. And if we can find a balance in between development and preservation, I think that would be a win-win. Because the only reason that people want to come here is because it is an incredible home and city with community values. If we take that away, we will not grow. If we just find a balance.
It's a silverstone. It's a silverstone. We start, we're good project, and we can move on and progress. And I think destroying the green space is just not one of them.
All of the millennials appreciate green space and the way that the direction of the world in USA is moving towards are people that have values for the green spaces. I mean, where are, where are we? Are we that outdated to where we're not, where we're seeing that this actually matters to us people?
I mean, it's a very tough place to be and when we're kind of worried about this building in particular, being able to be purchased and jumped on it so rapidly and got it bought was to preserve history and to make sure that it wasn't torn down by a developer and somebody coming here and flattening this lot completely off for none of us having to say so about those trees out there. And without us buying this building and moving forward with that, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So I'm glad we have this conversation.
Exactly. And up here, we have the DDA, and this was not up for sale. We just got wind that the owner might be willing to sell. And we knew there were other interested parties. So we, the DDA, tried to lean in and get a hold of this building to make sure it wasn't destroyed, turned it into a park, chopped up in all kinds of strange ways. We wanted to keep the outside of the state looking like it's been looking. We wanted it to stay a part of Denver, so that's why we went in and rushed and bought the building for a million dollars plus five hundred thousand to do some immediate repairs on it. Okay, a million and a half dollar purchase that the DDA did, and then we signed it over to the city, and it became their government building. But we knew there's gonna have to be some way of generating money to pay for that million and a half dollars that we spent to keep this building Denver's and not become some sort of a, like I said, multifamily pack dwelling or it's torn down for condos or whatever. We've been multileding for it, and that was the only way we could proceed preserving this building, keeping a handle on it by making it Denver's building. So we bought it.
Genuinely, that's really why?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to say, exactly.
She was on DDA, and now this is what we went through to preserve this building now. There are gonna have to be some adjustments made on the inside to get something in here to help pay for the thing. It's either that or tax payers.
Or sell it.
Here we go.
Or sell it.
Okay, let's talk about this for a minute. I'll talk about moving the police department up here. Y'all know where our police department is down there. I am the council representative for public safety, police and fire. I've had many conversations with our police department. They don't want to come up here. They are happy where they are. They have a presence in our park. Y'all see, you can't really tell from these little stickers that our police officers going down into the park and give the children. They're down there talking to these kids, building relationships, talking with their parents, and I just think that's a blessing for us.
Casey, can you step forward in reply to what Jimmy is talking about, please?
But, uh, lost my train of thought here.
You were talking about the police officer standing out those back, just helping build and report.
And with our police officers being down here at this park, the people, the moms, the dads, the kids feel a sense of safety there. And it also says to someone that wants to come in here and harm our children, you're at the wrong place.
I agree. I agree with you on the values there.
So, force police department, I can, we can do our job in any building out here, as long as we got a building, you know? There's some things I really like about the building we're in now. If anybody has been into my office, it is really a cool building.
It is.
And I do like, I do love it. Do we need more space? Yes. That building is, is too small for what we need. We have grown our police department without adding people. And what I mean by that is, for thirty years, Denver's never had an instructor. We have now, we have three instructors, but it's the ones that were there. So we've grown ourselves and learned more things so that we don't have to go outside of our police department. Or is the building, I do love the building down there. Like I said, I can do my job in any building. And it's not a, not for me to decide what happens with the buildings. I do love our building, but, like I said.
Can everyone do their job in the building? Is everyone okay to do their job successfully?
We could do our job. We do need to update some of our evidence room and that kind of stuff to make it. And there is more room that we need to have. I mean, we could use a lot more room. There's no question about that. It's just, it makes, would make things easier, but, you know.
I thought there was an issue with the police department, that a lot of money is gonna have to be spent because of mill mill and stuff.
Well, that was in the basement. They had some mold in the basement. They fixed that. Yeah, it's fixed now.
At what cost?
Well, they got the numbers on it.
I want to say it's in the fifteen thousand dollar range. We spent more at the fire department than we did at the police department.
Any more questions?
And we also, you know, we can continue this conversation a little bit more at our next meeting. So we'll have some time to talk about it. So let's move on to, um, you have, you want to talk about the layout? What can we talk about on the inside of the building real quick?
Sure.
And we can hold some of the comments till later next.
Rhonda, can you roll to the plans, please, ma'am? Y'all, this is the break of the, uh.
Break of the, it's blank rainwater, so we have been charged by the city to come up with some design development to be applied to this facility so that they can maximize the efficiencies of it and see what the spaces can be used for. Uh, so back in May, y'all decided to go through this design development. And what we've been doing since then is trying to come up with the best use of these spaces. Now, obviously, that post office being on that end of the building is part of what you see right here. But what you have in front of you is, you got seven pages, and this sort of corresponds with the numbers that you see on here, sort of highlighted in the need section, police department in the area where the city hall is currently. And then the city hall being relocated into this middle section right outside these doors here, and then of course, the post office on the far end. So, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job of taking what we have and trying to do a little demolition and add on to the spaces so that the cost for the project can come down. But overall, our charge was to come up with a program. And the program is, okay, what is gonna have to be, what's the building gonna have to be used for? What things are gonna have to be housed and serviced at this facility? And then, continue that design development to a point where we could give you guys a price, a budget price for what it would cost to do these renovations. So it's my understanding that the, you know, that the drawings that you have before you now have been looked over, I know several times by Mark and Megan. I think the police department has been involved as well. So we've sort of gone back and forth a few times, if not several, just to come up with what you see right here. Like I said, it's sort of easy to follow cover sheets and overall plan that is numbered, and the corresponding pages are the number that you see in the front page there.
Have you come up with a partnership?
No, I mean, what, what, first step was to come up with a program, right? What are the spaces, what do they need to be used for? And then the second step would be to come up with a floor plan, a conceptual design of this facility so that we could meet that program. The next step will be to go into a deeper evaluation of the systems in this building, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, those kind of things, and then start doing more design development to get to construction drawings that can then be priced out. But what we hope to do and feel confident that we'll be able to do is take it from the conceptual drawing that you see here now, develop them, you know, with the application of how the systems in this current facility work and which ones would be able to service the spaces. And then, after that, be able to come up with, okay, we feel like this project that we see now on paper and that we have evaluated to the degree that we have evaluated, should give you, we'll be able to give you a budget number for the overall cost.
This looks great. I mean, as somebody who went to elementary school here and lived in this community basically my whole life, it is really cool that we're able to take a building with so much history. And to see it laid out like this is really, really cool. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Obviously enjoy being involved with the project thus far. I hope it continues to get followed. Any questions? You what?
The trees are missing.
Yeah, thank goodness our scopeal workers inside this building and not outside this building. Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you.
The next step, just, I mean, what I think the next step for us would be to get approval of this overall design.
Concept.
Yeah, concept, and then we'll be able to move on to the, to the next steps.
So with this concept, police departments will be here?
Yeah, they're on the, they're in the end of the building where City Hall is now. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, thank you.
Hey, would you leave me that copy too?
Yeah.
What's the time? All right.
Next discussion of grants.
Yes, I do.
Y'all heard us talk about the playground grant for an interactive playground for handicapped, special needs children that can be interacted. We can always get the children to the parks. What do they do when they get there? There's not much things that they're in a wheelchair, or they can put into a special swing or something like that. This is, I took this idea from a program that Clipper Petroleum started out of Hall County. They have a roundup program in their community stores. And so if yours is a dollar fifty, they ask you, you wanna commit the fifty cents to round it up to their foundation. And they started raising funds for this type of playground. There's two of them in Hall County School System. One of them is in Walton Mountain School District, which is about five minutes from our house, and we utilize it. And then at the new Sanford Deale Elementary School, they built one. Starting in twenty twenty-seven, the governor has passed a resolution that states any new school, elementary school that isn't built, not renovated, but built, will have to budget for this type of playground. So you're gonna see them coming more and more prevalent as we get closer to the school projects. But this is a grant that I started, and then we hired Brad Day, discussed it with Jerry, and he put me in touch with Emily and John Harry. And they have a special needs child. And so they went on a mission to travel all over the United States looking at these type of playgrounds. And they started about one C three. And we got together with her knowledge, with our knowledge, and with what they started in Hall County. And we have put together a master plan to, at the existing park, it would start being basically in the area of the existing playground. We would remove that playground, we would reinstall that back here at the ball field in the swings, back by now in City Hall as an additional park. Then the layout then would become other going toward the other opposite end, away from the pavilion with a interactive playground. So we received our first grant of a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars for the recycled tires through V and R, which is whatever you, you can charge three or four dollars, whatever you get new tires, and they take your old ones, well, they recycle those. And our request was for a hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. V and R approved us for a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. It's a rubber surface that gives wheel tires or anything like that to roll across and not be, you know, bogged down in mulch or something like that. Comes in all kind of crazy colors. And then the playground equipment is a total amount of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, plus that one fifty-nine. We were approved for the total grant amount of seven thirty-nine, but it is a fifty percent match. So three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. So we have to raise three hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars for that match. They are allowing us to count the hundred fifty-nine of the V and R grant as part of that. So we have a goal of two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to start raising money. And they've already raised some of that money. We've already been calling on donors, from corporations to individuals who are making their pledges. Now that we're approved for this grant, I'm looking for convictions now. Because before, we were just asking in general, hey, you support this idea, you like this idea? Now, we started our first meeting last Friday with Brad Day and the Harry himself. And he'll be attending the next one that he had conflict with last Friday, and we're making our. And we're making our donors list. I don't care if somebody can give five bucks or somebody can give fifty thousand dollars. No gift is too small. And they've got a donor list on these playgrounds. And you've got car dealerships, you've got logistic companies. Of course, you've got Clipper Petroleum and individuals who have donated this money because they'll get a tax write-off because they'll donate that money to the nonprofit right there. And so that will be our task. This grant is two years. It starts, it will begin in August of twenty seven. We would like to have this money raised by the end of the year. United Way is partnering with us or fundraiser through them. Uh, we've got some other groups like that. We'll be going to speak to, uh, Rotary, different groups. And, um, Jamie already did a fundraiser at Holden Over Soul, roughly fifty eight hundred dollars, I believe. And so we got started on it. We've got, like I said, some personal folks that are prepared to write us some checks. And, uh, it will be a heck of a project. But we knew we had to raise this money, and we're well on our way of making that happen. So what I'm asking for is for y'all to accept the grant and there's terms and conditions. Brad would get, uh, a commission off of this. So three sixty nine times point oh six, forty two thousand dollars. And, uh, for his payment for writing the grant, going through that. And then it'll be additional fee for him to administer and follow all the guidelines through that. That's per his contract, which we'll see all of this at the next meeting. But today, we just gotta accept the grant first, and that's the rule I'm asking y'all to do today.
You're good. Guys, any discussion? Glad to have this grant privilege.
How about it connect to parking?
Well, it's just sort of, I mean, the parking is the parking at the park. Is that what you said, parking?
Yes, because I know that this this ground cover is good for wheelchairs. What about getting to the center?
We'd have to look at sidewalks.
Okay.
So that's just not part of this.
Sure.
So, because we got the, we got it if you park behind the police station, there's a handicap space right there. You can get all the way around to where the existing park is now. So we may have to do something coming across from Massachusetts or something coming from Johnny Mize on that end. But
To get to
To wreck.
But that's as long as the police station remains there.
We still, we still own the police station. We would, again, another restaurant wants to go there now, so.
Putting putting a playground in the park has no connection to where the police department is. This is for children, all abilities to have a place to play. There's no place like that in Haversham County right now. Mark gave examples of places that are in Hall County. And just like you said, the governor's requiring all these schools to be doing that. But we were approached about if if we would be willing to allow our playground, playground, our park area to have this playground area. Um, and we appointed Emily Rice-Heron as our champion, I guess, for this. And she's the head of the, uh, nonprofit, uh, Price Play. So we've got, in order to get this done, we have to raise the money. I mean, it seemed like an almost insurmountable task when we heard, what was it, eight hundred total? Eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars for this. But then we got the grants, and then that brings it down to a reachable level. But this is something for everybody in the entire community because there's nothing like this for kids in Haversham County.
Our park is definitely
I just wanted to make sure that since there's
It has no connection, zero connection.
Yeah, there's parking behind the police station.
That would still be available.
We actually just increased some parking areas back behind the police department.
This is for the greater good
We don't want big amounts of students to know about.
This is for the greater good of Haversham County because our park is heavily used every day. Well, it's everything is, yes, it is. And, uh, so this is an added feature to that. And again, if you think about this, seven thirty nine is, uh, this amount plus the one fifty nine, that's eight hundred ninety eight thousand dollars. Total.
How much did we raise for our maintenance?
I I don't have that total, but I'd say fifty thousand, yes.
What happens if you don't raise? That is a kill.
Well,
It would allow you to go back to the dorms.
Well, no, that would happen, but that's a, yeah, that's something between the nonprofit.
What's the timeline for this?
We would love to see it done by then.
To get started.
Yeah.
So my timeline is to raise the funds by the end of the year. And for it to start in the first quarter.
And would you extend it?
The the grant, the grant has got to be completed by August of twenty seven. So you got two years.
Okay. So it will be extended and it will continue to
Same thing with the other grant. You can always ask to extend it. This grant is through the federal government, where the first one is through D and R. And in nineteen sixty nine, the city applied for this very same type grant to build that park.
I think it's a great idea.
So, yes.
And the current playground equipment that's down there right now is, would be brought up to the ball field up here. So that becomes a new park, new playground for children up here too.
For small, yeah.
Smaller kids.
Yes, ma'am. One in each place.
Okay. The one in the city park is would be mainly for
No, for, I mean, it's still for all.
I was gonna say be for all children, and the one up here will be
For whoever can use, utilize.
Be a different park.
Yes, ma'am. There's there's swings up there already.
It's just so, it's just so that the equipment down there is not going to waste.
Okay, that's
So there's swings there. Yes, ma'am. Hold it all.
Will dogs still be allowed?
Sure.
Oh, good.
Separate section.
Just not inside playground area that we're, uh,
It'll be gated off.
Yes, ma'am. Separate entrances.
All right, y'all have any other questions about accepting this grant?
What about the fences?
You what?
That is a great question.
That's a very big question, but we'll make sure that we have flyers.
It hasn't happened.
Heard nothing.
I got a lot of love with that.
How could you?
I have a check.
Are you still on such checks?
Just not too boring out of state check.
Next is, uh, Consolidated Pipe invoice. Mark and then you have Brian here to talk about this in the run-up.
Yep, Brian was here, and, uh, we have a water leak in the restaurant that's affected by this closes at eight o'clock and opens at seven in the morning. So Brian will, and his crew will be returning to work at eight o'clock tonight, whatever time tonight. So that's why he left. What we have here is you have two different invoice options. Our water meters are made in Israel. So guess what that means? Terrace. So we have a fixed price with our loyalty, customer loyalty program through Consolidated Pipe. And our price for that water meter is two hundred eighty five dollars. They had three hundred left in their, in their warehouse. And they offered them to Brian and I. You want a hundred fifty of them? And for a hundred fifty, that total cost is thirty five thousand, five hundred forty five dollars. When you run out of those hundred fifty, there's gonna be a price increase. Don't know yet how much. Or you want the three hundred meters at seventy, seventy thousand, five hundred. So the question before you is, we have seventy two hundred water meters customers. This is the drop in the bucket. And we need these. I would recommend that we go ahead and do the three hundred. This will come out of the Water Extension Fund so that when you're paying three thousand eighty five dollars for your meter to be installed, um, that money goes into a separate account. And that's where these funds would come from because that's reinvesting that money. Because again, the the meter is your cash register. It tells you how accurate the water is being used and you price it accordingly.
Some meters only under warranty for ten years, and we do have several that are
We are.
The batteries are going out.
And what happens is through our customer loyalty is we sell, we give these back to them to ship. One second, ma'am. We give them back to Consolidated Pipe for a reduced price because they send them back to Israel where they break them down and rebuild those. And you get a replacement like that when there's warranty on what existing meters that may have. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my water meter to my house is always main street. And I was wondering, I've asked you this before. Why is it so far away from my house and I'm in charge of everything, the water meter to my house? And it all goes under the street which is sitting up.
Typically, I don't know your situation. Typically, the water meter goes in the right way.
Okay.
And that's
That's what I thought, but that's what I was wondering because when I asked the water department, they didn't give me an answer. But I thought, who do I need to talk to?
You just need to give me your street address, please.
Two thirty Kawaiun Street. And it's out, um, I think that's Hayes.
Yes.
It comes up from the, that's where my water meter is.
Holly, were you Holly?
Holly Street.
I don't know, but we can find out tomorrow.
Okay, because I was just, they were talking about maybe I could check for a week and I haven't paid for it. Do you have the street and everybody else? I just wondered if there was a way.
We can, we can just find that out tomorrow.
Thank you, Miss Ben. The the question in front of us is if we go forward and move on the seventy thousand dollar purchase. We have this in the budget. I wonder if y'all have any questions about this or
This is a little budget?
Because it comes out of the Water Extension. Now, I will tell you, their paperwork got messed up. They sent us three hundred meters on Friday of last week, so they are sitting in the shop. But I told them if y'all approve this, they gotta come get them.
They're already here.
Yeah. Yeah, totally unexpected.
Well, that's a negotiated thing.
Y'all have any questions about this?
Sure, I buy in there.
There are none made in America. They're, they all come in pieces.
They come in pieces, which sent me down a hole.
They got me at home last night.
I'm looking at different companies. Yeah. And some of the ones that work with our reading software and things like that. It's a complicated problem.
All right. Guys, if y'all need more chairs, there's some in the other room or feel free to sit in the front room.
Next is the permit fee schedule. We tabled this last month.
Let's table it again after our discussion today.
Okay, okay. I I would, you know, Mark and I had a conversation about it. I've had a, we had a few comments to make a few changes that I would request y'all table that so we can get some
I think everyone has some input into it too. I will table it. I will try to table it.
Well,
I'll talk to them.
Yeah, we'll talk.
I will table.
Perfect. Next is, uh, the amendment. It's gonna be second reading. We'll do this. Wholesale water rates to Talula Falls. Talula Falls does buy from our Chicoa side of the system. So every time Chicoa goes up, we have to pass that along to Talula Falls. Chicoa did go up on us on July the first, and we're a little late to get that increase up into Talula Falls. So we're looking at going up to on them. How much for a thousand, Mark?
Three dollars and thirty cents. That's up from three dollars and nineteen cents. And Fletcher and I have set a ticker system that we start discussing this in May, and the letter goes out in June because it's a thirty day notice. And so we have fixed that for next time. And that puts our rate at four dollars and thirty cents to Talula Falls, and that is an increase of two point eight eight percent. And then that, like I said, this will go out to them tomorrow, and it'll be thirty days from there to get that.
Uh, next is this discussion of employment requests. Are we gonna talk about this? I'm gonna recommend you all table this until the council decides what they want to do about our project. Next is the discussion of fire department options. I don't think we have any information on that to discuss this this time, so we'll skip that one. And next we have I'm sorry, ma'am.
When will you have information about that?
I think, I think soon.
This has been a little on the question.
We started discussing this in October of last year.
It needs to be resolved.
Part of it will be in our budget that you'll hear next month. As part of that, because we are in the budget season right now.
Because it's not resolved, people aren't getting it for their
All right, next, Tom, do you want to go into executive session now?
King. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. We need a motion to go into executive session for following reasons.
Personnel, relegations, and, uh, acquisition, disposition of properties.
All for it. Very good. We need a motion to go into executive session. You got a second?
I'll show you.
Hold it in your paper. Y'all bear with us.
You gotta feel a little fierce, motherfucker.
Oh, looks good.
With soapstone.
Yeah.
It's like kind of a...
Acid.
I forgot about that tile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one, uh... They just used the random materials.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We're grateful for our community. We're grateful for a place that we can all come together as family and share our ideas, our thoughts, and be respectful of one another. We ask that we, uh, work to glorify your name and our actions glorify you, glorify you. Jesus in my prayer, amen.
Amen.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, we need approval of the agenda. Thomas, do you have any suggestions or anything you can take off the agenda or table?
What's that?
Anything, please.
No, it's a... Since we're in a special call meeting, you can't alter the agenda. You'll just have to table the items and then get there.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. We need approval of the agenda as it sits. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thomas, do you have any suggestions or anything you can take off the agenda or table?
What's that?
Anything, please.
No, it's a... Since we're in a special call meeting, you can't alter the agenda. You'll just have to table the items and then get there.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. We need approval of the agenda as it sits. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thomas, do you have any suggestions or anything you can take off the agenda or table?
What's that?
Anything, please.
No, it's a... Since we're in a special call meeting, you can't alter the agenda. You'll just have to table the items and then get there.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. We need approval of the agenda as it sits. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thomas, do you have any suggestions or anything you can take off the agenda or table?
What's that?
Anything, please.
No, it's a... Since we're in a special call meeting, you can't alter the agenda. You'll just have to table the items and then get there.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. We need approval of the minutes. It's where we mail that to you all, so we will entertain a motion at your leisure to approve those minutes. Those are from July 10th to July 17th and August 5th.
I'm making a motion to approve this as written.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All those have actually approved the minutes as written. All right. So next is consideration of the parking lot and landscape design. We talked about this in work session, and like we talked about, this is first drawings so we can start through the process and get quotes to see whether or not we can afford to move forward and start putting together a budget for this parking lot and landscape design, which also includes the streets that we have up several times about. And with this design laid out in front of us is maximizing that. So I think that we've heard a lot of comments from people, a lot of, uh, I know received emails for or emails against, and I'm sure if y'all receive phone calls and rented books and purchased for too, that are being both ways. So with this in front of us, council, it's either our time to say, all right, we need to go back to drawing board on this and look in a different direction. We can table it, we can accept it as presented tonight. What would y'all want to discuss?
So some of the concept plans, nothing's written in stone at this point. I'm sorry. I think...
Sorry. Can y'all hear me now? Since it's only a concept plans at this point and nothing's written in stone, and since I do have some suggestions on some of these, uh, I'll make a motion to go forward with these concept plans.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second with the concept planes?
Are there costs involved in this?
We've got a con... We've got a contract with both the surveyor who did the landscaping plan and with, uh, Ray Martin. And I think we approved those several of the time. Uh, that's our own cost.
Yeah, the surveyor finished his, and he's been made, I don't... I want to say around $5,700, and he did a complete survey of everything properly. And I want to say that the plan's contract was $120,000, $19,000, including the architect, and then if we go forward with that, they'll... They'll have funds in there to bring in mechanical engineers, architects, what about architectural let up, um, uh, engineers to see, you know, the low barrier walls, et cetera. So all that is listed in that contract.
There'll be no additional cost for the city at this time?
At this point, not unless we have any contracts.
You were about to approve and move forward and move forward with this plan, because that would be funding. That would be funding that you had to approve. This is just moving forward with some type of draw lines like others. Move forward with the other price.
Sean, are you wanting us to move forward with Plan A or Plan B?
No, I have to decide. It's your concepts, so I thought we could agree on that.
I think we're okay with either one at this point in time because again, if we want to look at Plan B, maybe we can get it with how... I mean, B, well, we can like tell them, we did the whole thing.
I mean, I mean, hold on, I think I prefer B because these are the greens, so I'll pick B.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we need approval of the agenda. Thomas, do you have any suggestion or way to take off the agenda or table it?
What's that?
Anything, please.
No, it's a, since we're in a special call meeting, you can't alter the agenda. You'll just have to table the items and then get there.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. We need approval of the agenda as it sits. Thank you. Do we have a second? All right. Thomas, you have yours first. All those in favor? All right. Now, we have two sections for appearance and public comments. So I'm glad everybody's hearing tonight. So I will ask, our clerk has reminded me, please step to the podium and state your names, state your address, and whether or not you live outside student limits. So we will open it up for top public comments for anyone that would like to come up and speak.
This is any comment?
We have another comment at the end of the meeting if you want to wait.
You don't want to wait. Is this?
You know, I'm, I'm just.
If we want to comment at all as in respond or reply or anything.
Like to the agenda?
We need to say, are you wanting?
Right. We want to comment on the agenda as your time. Yes, sir.
I don't have a comment at this moment. I'll just introduce myself. Is that what we're saying? Okay.
If you'll take that mic close, I'll make sure it's on.
Cherry McCullough, eight eighty-eight Central Avenue, Demeris, Georgia. I am a resident of this county. Thank you. Both.
All right. What do you want else I can speak?
So like I can speak now or like it's not, or it's like now or never?
At the vote for. Now or later at the end of the meeting?
Okay, okay. I'll do it later. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Council, the on being held, this is a. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. It's where we mail that to you all. So we will entertain a motion at your leisure to approve those minutes over from July ten to July seventeen and August the fifth.
I'm making a motion to approve this as.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes is written? All right. So next is consideration of the parking lot and landscape design. We talked about this in work session. And like we talked about, this is first drawings. So we can start through the process and get quotes to see whether or not that we can afford to move forward and start putting together a budget for this parking lot and landscape design, which also includes the trees that we have up several times ago. And with this design laid out in front of us is maximizing that. So I think that we've heard a lot of comments from people, a lot of, uh, I know we've received emails for or emails against, and I'm sure y'all have received phone calls and rented books and purchase for too, that are being both ways. So with this in front of us, council, it's either our time to say, all right, we need to go back to drawing board on this and look in a different direction. We can table it. We can accept it as presented tonight. What would y'all like to discuss?
So some of the concept plans, nothing's written in stone at this point.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Since it's only a concept plans at this point and nothing's written in stone, and since I do have some suggestions on some of these, uh, I'll make a motion to go forward with these concept plans.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a second to follow with the concept plans?
Are there costs involved in this?
We've got a con, we've got a contract with both the, uh, surveyor who did the landscaping plan and with, uh, Ray Martin. And I think we approved those several of the stack. Uh, that's our own cost.
Yeah, the surveyor finished his and he's been made, I know, I want to say around fifty-seven hundred dollars. He did a complete survey of everything properly. And I want to say that the plan's contract from hundred and forty thousand, nineteen thousand, including the architect, and then if we go forward with that, they'll, they'll have funds in there to bring in mechanical engineers, architects, what about architectural let up, um, uh, engineers to see, you know, the low bay walls, et cetera. So all that is listed in that contract.
There'll be no additional cost for the city at this time?
Not at this point, not unless we give in contracts.
You were about to approve and move forward and move forward. That's why I said that would be funding, that would be funding that we have to approve. This is just moving forward with some type of draw lines like others.
Sean, are you wanting us to move forward with plan A or plan B?
No, I have to decide. It's your concepts. So I thought these could be made.
I think we're okay with either one at this point in time because again, if we want to look at plan B, maybe we can get it with how, I mean, B, well, we can like tell them, we did the whole thing.
I mean, I mean, hold on, I think I, I prefer B because these are the greens. That's all pretty B. I was thinking when you all had parking.
I didn't see plan B. Where's plan B? Has somebody put that on the screen for me?
Well, I think you can plan A and B.
It's all of that parking to the left.
I don't see why you don't use that to begin with. It stays empty all day long. I work from home. I see it.
I was hoping you were talking about the same thing. I didn't see what you were talking about.
As I was stating, I, I don't see any reason how they have all that additional parking up in there. Seems like in front of, you know.
Well, I didn't, uh, sort of, you need to park to the left right there. I was thinking before, maybe just asking my opinions. Yeah, I would probably do that, too.
These look the same to me except one is highlighted for plan B. What is plan A?
The highlighted part is on.
Oh, it's just everything. It's just like cutting the tree. Okay.
Well, where is it not ironed in place? I mean, where would they exist?
Okay, that's why we're saying they would be removed.
They would be removed.
So if they were moved here.
You see this, and this is.
Yeah, that doesn't.
I don't care about, I want hydrangeas. Thank you, Megan. Yeah.
Uh, corner date up here right now, the school is held in this building. That parking lot does still up on corner date and.
I have seen that.
Yes, once it's on. And, uh, so that is something, but I would be fine with either one of them, but I would price it out both ways when we get to that point.
But either one doesn't include the existing.
Either way, it includes all the trees.
It doesn't include the existing, the existing trees that are out?
Yes, ma'am.
That's plan B. That's plan B.
Well.
And we can, we can circle back to that.
Because Megan just said either plan did not.
They asked that they would be removed. It would be a green space and that's where she goes in here about.
But the existing trees would be removed.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we were just asking. I just did. I said, what about?
I'm going to second that motion that was made.
They would be removed, the trees.
Okay, well, that's what I just asked and you told me no, they would be there. Do you want to talk?
We have to have.
Well, I, I have, I have some, I have some clarifying.
This is only for design work. Get to a fight even.
Yeah, but. But why wasn't there a, a B of including the tree?
And we can absolutely have that conversation during this process.
Excellent. So how do we object to this? As in object to the concept?
During the public comments.
Okay.
What is currently being done with the parking lot back behind the gym that used to be the old teachers' apartment?
We do have a motion in the second one on the table. So we have a motion in the second one that says move forward, draw lengths. So we'll have to put that for a vote. Do you want to have a vote?
Do we have a no vote?
Yes.
We have one no vote. All right. Those are conceptual drawings to move forward or pricing it out and move forward with any other future plans. This is not a tally. This is.
I know, but. I, I know, Jerry, but you.
I think that there's an ability for us to look to the engineers and.
Well, why you?
I know, Jerry, but you have to understand, there's a lot of people here that we have emotional ties to those trees and we're not going to let them go easily. Our grandparents, our parents lived under those trees. As far as I'm concerned, they're in good condition. Is that right? Has anybody had a tree doctor out?
We actually have, um, and they're not in a great, great condition.
Okay. Well, like I would ask you to do if it were your, your best friend, like could you get a second opinion at least? But I just think that there is something that we could do, a collaborative effort to find another solution than to cut those trees down. I think that we could think about this back parking lot behind the gym. We can think about the parking lot that's right behind the old cafeteria in the gym. I know that we have people that play basketball and that's open, but you have to understand, people don't spend hours.
Megan said, I thought this ended, so let's hold it to the engineering to give them.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. But people don't spend all day at the post office. They're in and out.
I understand.
So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Let's move forward to consideration of the city hall, um, of the conceptual plans for inside structure. Those were drawn out for us. And those are conceptual drawings. Once again, get us to a place that we can bid it out to see what we can do. In the middle, under floor, you have city hall. Area in the back, you have staff offices, um, two, or what is it?
That's kind of the, the existing city hall, but where the police would be.
Okay, that's the police.
That's in that right area is for, um, s- city hall staff.
And this is try to minimize, to keep as many walls as we can and try to make it as economical as we can and make this work, but also good in front, in the front.
Where they, where's the consideration in the plan for the post office?
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Where's the consideration in the plan for the post office? We couldn't really figure that out. We looked at the.
Does that have a meter amount back on that large flag again?
It'll be, it is the left hand side, number two. Yes, they'll.
Okay, so it's.
Those three classrooms and the, the very back classroom, we would be out the back side of the cafeteria. And that's where they would throw their scissor lift to come into that one back, uh, classroom. If my plan is approved, back end of the building would be a hundred percent used between the post office and city hall.
Okay. And where?
Nothing would be in those classrooms to the right. Moving down this way, there would be nothing in those. Those would all be naked except for the end cap.
And where is the area for the police department?
Oh, uh, five, seven, and six.
Okay. I just wasn't here originally to hear all of this. That's why I was saying I did not know and I couldn't, I saw the numbers, but didn't know that there wasn't a.
And I was saying that round circle on there is one of the two trees. You can kind of see where our location, where that would be.
And once again, this is going to get us to a place that we can see a budget to see whether or not this is something that the city can move forward with and can do. So this isn't locking this into anything except that the architects are on the correct path.
Are we actually going to vote at a later time regarding the move of the police department and the post office? Or are those issues already?
No, this is just, this is put the funding, this is just putting it out there, bringing it down. So without the plans, we can't, we can't pass. Let's say it all because of the big about it. It's all wish list, okay? And we got to cut out four hundred thousand dollars. We start cutting.
It seems like the decision's been made.
I will have the numbers on how confident the decision be made.
I've seen reflect a lot of decisions have been made. This is, this is really getting to a place that the decision's been made.
Can a different concept or an alternate concept, can there be more than this one concept as in conceptual drawing? The, is it perhaps maybe if we were to go over some other options instead of just this one?
You don't have to go to the building.
I'm two. There's a plan B. There are some plan B. That's the outside.
This concept.
Are you going to put a parking or a building?
That's the outside. This is just the building.
Well, now that I'm here, to be honest with you, both.
Because the plan inside, one thing that we have in this building.
Yes, sir.
Twelve bench poured walls. And you don't just go through twelve bench poured walls to make new doors. And we got the layout of the classrooms being long and not very wide. So that, that we're kind of ham, hampered with some of those submissions there because again, where the city staff would be on the backside there, we're taking the classrooms as they exist, putting up a wall down the middle to make a conference room, to make a workstation area. And we're taking another one to turn into a, a restroom and storage, another one for a break room, and then the third one is being split straight down for two office spaces. So you, your design of the walls.
And all these use.
I'm sorry.
But not just okay, the design of these thick walls and these walls are just as thick inside as the exterior walls are.
The building's historic too. One thing that I just, I had a quick question about and I will definitely speak at the end, but, um, has an environmental engineer assessed the, the environmental impact of removing those trees with those amount of large roots? And the runoff and retaining walls and all of that involved? I mean, I've already got water issues down this way. I would hate for all of that water to gush down Central Avenue and it be an issue because honestly, the city of Demeris has a lot of work to do with the water runoff infrastructure.
And I think it would be changing with these concept plans on the backside, other than the post office.
I'm talking about the front side.
The front side, all that.
When those trees are removed because those roots.
Yeah, we talked about that in the work session. Your engineer does have the responsibility of make sure that groundwater doesn't leave the property. That put in underground tanks or some type of retention.
That sounds cheap. That sounds really cheap.
So we got to.
So that's all we have to get all these numbers and plans to get us to get an accurate bid cost. Again, you can go down to Big Word, the contingent is a million dollars.
Yeah. I'm so. I'm so entertained by this.
And it is only, but I have to get to that point that give every council in the public.
Okay, I was just planting a seed because that's something you should think about.
Well, it's, it's definitely.
Because I already get runoff from your parking lot into my property. So I just want to make sure that.
I know.
Okay. Well, I hope she types mine. Let's move on.
Miss Percy, my comment was totally unnecessary. I apologize to you, but I thought your dig at me was unnecessary as well.
I'm sorry. So we have a conversation for the city hall presentation, concept plans. Do we have a motion to move forward? Do you have a suggestion or would you like to say?
Any one of us?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to move it forward.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of move forward with the plans as they've been presented?
Of concepts, concept, aren't you, sir? All right. Three yeses. Jimmy?
No.
No. Do you have a suggestion on change?
I think we should look at a, more than the one thing. We should look at different options. And one of the options being do nothing, leave the trees alone, leave the post office where it is. We're, we're looking at spending more than a million dollars just inside this building.
Jimmy, where have you been in the last months that we've been talking about this? You've been sitting right there.
Right here, right here beside you.
And, and you've not said any of this. And then tonight, where.
Now you're looking at drawings of plants.
That's a sidebar conversation, I'll give you.
Well, let's move on. It passed. Let's move on to, um, looking at the grant for the park. We have in front of us is the grant that we need to accept. That funding amount is three sixty-nine years.
We should be down to five hundred and fifty-five dollars, eighty cents.
There is a portion of that grant that we'll need community help with to move forward to fund that. And we do have some assistance with Price to Play and nonprofit. We will have some stuff to get out in front of some folks if the council.
For you to accept this, this grant in front of us. Council, we need a motion to move forward with this grant.
Make a motion to approve the grant.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All those in favor of move forward with the grant? Consideration of consolidated pipe in voice. You have three options in front of you. One, do nothing. Two, approve the purchase of three hundred water meters or three, approve a hundred and fifty water meters.
If you carry one up here.
Yep.
Not actually going to see a brand new one and you're going to see a whole one. And if you look at it up here, oh, if y'all can see these after, the one, the new one is a cost of two hundred and eighty-five dollars. And those are made in Israel and so their tariff costs are going to come in. They had three hundred of these meters left in stock. They offered them at our price of two eighty-five. And that's the last three hundred that they have at this point in time. So you do not want to be without water meters. And, uh, so we can get a hundred and fifty out for thirty-five thousand, or we can get three hundred for seventy thousand. It is in the water extension budget to purchase this or when you come in and buy a meter, it's three thousand and fifty-five dollars. And that money is kept separate and that's what the fund is with. That money is used to reinvest back into water meters and new lines.
So the budget for three hundred?
Well, I'm taking it out because we didn't know about this. I've got two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in that account. So we did not have a budget for that, but we have the funds available to now make that budget.
We're going to be buying it one way or another. We're going to be buying it both now at a discount. People are going to buy it at a higher price. Council, who would you like to vote?
We have the funds for purchases.
It's two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in this account.
Costs seventy thousand. Costs seventy thousand?
Seventy thousand, three hundred. We have a total of seventy-two hundred meters. We had to swap out seventy-two hundred meters. It's probably today's same price. Because these are our cash register. That's the little twenty million dollars.
I'm making a motion about.
Two billion dollars.
I'm sorry, sir?
I'm going to surprise them.
All right. We have a motion about three hundred meters and a second. All those in favor of move forward with three hundred meters? Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jimmy.
Next is the permit fee schedule. Uh, Mark and I have talked about this today. I would like to suggest y'all table this until our next meeting and also ask y'all, uh, to give intuitive.
Please go to C B and let's talk about lease.
We're motioning to table it.
Thank you, sir. A second. All those in favor? All right. Next is a second reading of an ordinance. Thomas, do you have the ordinance?
The purpose of this ordinance, you've got an or, you've got a provision in your ordinances that prevents public disruption to meetings, but one of the things that I learned this summer at, uh, Savannah is that our ordinance, like many around the state in these, uh, older ordinances, has an apparent constitutional infirmity, uh, because there's no intent requirement. The new ordinance i- is intended to, um, remedy that. And as I explained last month, it doesn't criminalize obviously comments or side talk during a meeting. And the example I gave was it would be perfectly fine for people to stand over there on the wall with signs, uh, or, but if they came up and stood in front of you with signs, that would be disruption and that would violate this ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Thomas. This is open for second reading. So we have open this for public comment. Okay, very good. We have this open for a vote. We need to entertain a motion to vote on this.
I'm making a motion to approve, uh, this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
I'm sorry.
All those in favor? Very good. Next is consideration of wholesale water rates to Lula Falls. This is passing along our cost increase from the city to COA that you received in July. So we are passing this directly onto them on their wholesale rate. We need a motion to allow the city manager to send this rate adjustment to the city to Lula Falls.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a second? All those in favor? Good. Um, next was request to be tabled. Uh, Thomas, this is, uh, an employment request. Thomas, does that still your opinion?
It is.
Sir, we'll open that up for consideration or table.
Make motion to table it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Consideration of them as part of our options. Once again, we don't have anything in front of us. We need to open this up to be tabled. We have a motion.
Motion to table it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Next is manager's report.
All right. Ms. Amy Perkins, do you stand up, please?
April.
Please.
April. You said Amy.
Oh. April. I'm looking at her. April. If I call you Amy, you gotta please reply. I want y'all to welcome my newest employee. I want y'all to welcome my newest employee, Ms. Sharp, as a utility clerk in the city hall starting on Monday after twenty years with Lowe's. And she is in her two-week, uh, notice time at Lowe's.
Congratulations.
Sorry?
We are excited to have your touts.
Thank you.
And we have made a whole new job description.
That's a big deal.
That's okay.
She's a technology guru. She has unbelievable customer service dealing with Lowe's customers. And she says she can handle any of that water customer, right? She understands the financial system that we've got. And, uh, but we were looking forward to Monday. The worst part is Megan's on vacation and I'm in training. So we won't even be here to welcome you.
That's okay. Welcome you to the park.
All right, with that being said.
I, I, I took a look at your job description and it just simply says anything you don't want to do, April will do for you.
That's a good one, Jimmy. Thank you for that.
That's all babies has in mind.
That's why we already in the phone tree.
So thank you for that. All right. I've been told we set the date for Halloween, which is Friday, October thirty-first. And that should be the date we work in progress. Is that correct, Mary?
That's right.
All right, I want y'all to know that for the next three years, I will not be able to do a block. That's Friday night. Next year is on Saturday night and next year is on Sunday. And I don't miss that day. But my grandson told me I would be missing. So, uh, also, Lynn, how did you like that?
What, what, what location?
It, yeah, the plan is to move it to the park.
To the park?
Yes.
Lynn, how was your new drive home this past week or road ride?
You know, I'm missing the garbage guys like a lot better.
I bet.
I bet they do.
Well, I say that. I said that because her street had so many dips, jackup places. She now has a smooth ride because of two L-Meg grants from the governor's office. The first one was for thirty-seven thousand. We changed with an eleven thousand dollar match. And the second one was for forty-five thousand zero match. So we have done a lot of streets. They just completed them, um, on Friday. So you'll see Ballad Street, Abu, uh, Holly, Old Toycur and Pine.
Yeah, what are they doing there?
We have, we do some of those, um, manholes.
Okay, because I, I noticed that we're just doing just a little bit. I thought, why?
So it's because we getting the level back out.
Okay, doctor.
And so, um, Blue Ridge, when you turn off Georgia and Jerry's house, you have to go up a cement ramp. You can see trailers.
Yeah.
It's up digging into that. They dug all that back down and you probably have this much of herb on the two turnbys now because it's so deep. Uh, Chestnut Strip, uh, street back here, right starting, right before, right after Johnny Gun's house going down and around, it was in really bad shape. So a lot of work's been done and we've got one comment to check on, uh, from a little bus spot and we can work on that tomorrow. But overall, Brian and I were very pleased to stay in pay, uh, payment company, uh, that's done its last four years. And their pricing obviously is going up a bit of a fastball, but in the, stayed within his same model of price range of recipients in relationship to that cost.
Mark, I, I would suggest that when they are paving the streets like Rhode Island, uh, we didn't know it, so I got, I had to go through the yard on college.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that because I, that was one of my comments I was going to make as well because.
I know and Brian knew, so that falls to me. And so we well know it.
But, but I, I know that's probably the first time my street, I, I'm, I want to thank the governor, um, for, I guess, allowing us to have us and every other city and county and the extra L-Meg funds. Um, uh, absent that, you know, we don't have the funds to do, you know, a set amount of paving every year. I mean, it's very little. So, uh, I know my street, Walnut Avenue, was, um, was the first time it's probably been paved in forty or fifty years. Um, I've been complaining for longer than I've been on coun, I've been. Yeah, I've been complaining longer than I've been on council that I have to mow the grass on the street, uh, and spray weed killer at my own cost to kill everything, but it looks nice.
So do not take that around and Lynn.
Right now, we are in our budget cycle.
Lynn and I'll find something else to complain about.
And you do thank Brian, because Brian picked that street too.
He called him afterwards to make sure.
Oh, by the way.
Well, right now is budget time. We're working on our budget in twelve thirty-one and, uh, we've met several times with department heads and including our deputy city engineer, uh, EMI. And, uh, we've got the opportunity to, uh, with our village, rate that will be setting also in October. And I've got a basic budget laid out, everything that everyone in the department heads asked for and EMI. And, uh, you know, our big goal is reducing our water transfers. And to meet everything and maintain the same build rate, I've got to cut at least a million dollars and get back from that water transfer. But right now it's two point one billion to fund everything. And I need to be around one point one million as the maximum amount for water transfers. So mayor and council will, uh, get this out. You'll see this budget with all this and you'll get another budget, um, showing million-dollar cuts to that. And then we can pick and choose what's a need, what's a want, because we're not going to be able to go over that big enough. And if we maintain the military rate of seven point one six, that is a tax increase of fifty-three thousand dollars to move the, the taxable digest amount from four hundred and seventy-one thousand to five hundred, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. And six years ago, that amount was two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. You look at when the county or the city chose their military rate for the last eight years, you can see just no matter what city and what county, the tax digest value has doubled in that timeframe on the total gross amount. If you were at eight million, you're sixteen million. If you were at fifty million, you're at a hundred million. And that's where those values have gone up on that. So if we maintain that amount, we have to have three meetings in the month of October, which also will lead me to set the village at that time. So our first meeting is Tuesday, October the seventh. And then we've got to have a follow-up meeting. And we determined, uh, Megan, did you hear back from Thomas on the, uh, amount? Did you get to do some special advertising what that timeframe is in the three meetings?
If you're, is your rollback going to be the total rollback or is it going to be less than that?
You want a total rollback? It's six point five nine. It's still eleven thousand dollar increase.
If you're not doing the total rollback, you're going to have three meetings and they've got to be advertised and held a week apart.
So if you look at your calendar, guys, if we do need to get this planned.
The first one has to be advertised fifteen days in advance.
We gotta be, because I'm looking, our meeting, our first meeting of the month is October the seventh. So we know that day. And if you wanted to have on a Tuesday or a Thursday, that leaves you the second week and the third week, because we have to have all this turned in to the Happy Shade Tax Commissioner by October thirty-first or November first in the latest. So, uh, if you want to do it on a Thursday, you could do the seventh first on Tuesday and the sixteenth twenty-third or the thirtieth. You have three options for these meetings. And Thomas, one of these meetings can be at noon. So if y'all schedule.
On the same day. I mean, you can have two in.
Two in one day. And we can do a twelve o'clock meeting on the third day of the twenty-third. And then at six o'clock, have the second meeting with the day. Would that be for twenty dollars? Twenty-four, okay. So that's fine. So we could do the sixteenth or the thirtieth.
Or hopefully we don't need any of them.
Unless you're going to full rollback. If there's a possibility with the budget, because if you don't have that budget, I'm not putting that amount. I'm saying, because I feel like I'd have to be more than what I said because.
More than I said.
The sixteenth is a Thursday on the third. I'd say the thirtieth where we have enough time because y'all want some more changes done. October the seventh. But the thirtieth, we would have to have final decisions on that day. We'll start getting these budgets here before today is the, today is the fourth. You'll have these budgets, worst case, the week of the twenty-second, September.
First, October thirty, at noon at six o'clock.
If that's what y'all decide.
Yes.
All right, Lynn.
Can you tell me that again?
October thirtieth, the Thursday, at noon in this building and then six P M. in that day. October seventh, Tuesday, at our regular six and seven o'clock.
That's pretty good. Council, y'all, a lot of good things to direct.
Andrew, talk about, uh, yard sale for this weekend.
Our yard sale? Well, yeah, pretty yard sale. We, we kind of, we, we might up there.
We have quite a few here.
This is the last one from here. They, they really have, they have a great camp, but, um, I still would do for this. They, they have some water customers, I guess. And, um, they have their general, we, uh, they have a lot of funny spots and I feel about well and things like that. So, you know, we love them. But, and it's really, uh, I'm a part of the community, you know?
I've seen that and I've seen people here, but I know after the fact is that, because I'm, I follow you guys on Facebook, but I don't see any like, maybe I'm just, maybe I have filter search algorithms, but.
Not that you're going to be a city employee, but I'm.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, I can do it.
I would like, I would like it like a free morning.
Maybe let's check all that, be posted on a regular basis for stuff like this.
Just like prepare yourself so you can sign up and something.
I can fill you in what you need to know to just, just find me.
Good. Thank you.
You'll have access to the social media. No problem. I can pull it up.
All right, and you will go to section one because of the book that we had with the financials in section one. That's when Alan, he didn't know, he was talking about that. And really, I, I'm just, I don't really hit much of it. Uh, he gave us a little bit of a dash and, uh.
You can second.
Section one, the financials. Typically, there would be back to under eleven. All right, everybody there, go to page two, which is our note in bond payable balances. I don't know if y'all noticed, an unmarked garbage truck driving around. Now, that garbage truck will be stickered here in the next week, presumably it will not be unmarked anymore. And, uh.
What happened to the old one?
It's parked.
It was leaking a lot of stuff.
And put in a hot pot.
A big spot.
Because it was rusted out of the pot and it was twenty-something years old.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it, it's done its job so far and right now, as they spare.
They're planting flowers.
Well, we're looking at some possible recycling as a different thing. But then there's another great paper to recycle that you have to throw away with the garbage. But that being said, that truck costs two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And we finished that through, uh, G M A and they have an outside lender that they deal with this on. And my payment is going to be, uh, thirty-four hundred dollars a month. And so that debt, starting next month, well, you'll show that on this page two. If you will go to page, page five, I will show you the funding mechanism that will handle this. Under operating revenue, we have water fees, sewer fees, hyper fees, garbage fees. Garbage fees collects about eighty, almost eighty-seven thousand dollars per year day and that would be for seven months. And divided by seven, that's twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars average or this month is eleven thousand dollars. We want to use that funding source to fund that payment. And that's how you will always hear me say, we need a funding mechanism to pay for something for seven years. So we'll have plenty of time left in there is right by our truck and chassis. And, uh, the truck, our existing truck is fourteen yards. This truck is twenty yards and it will cut down only one trip a day to the landfill. So that increases our production and so we are full board with that. And, uh, I got to tell you, there's no juice drinking. Very white and I told you guys.
Big I keep it clean.
When you come out of that landfill and it's muddy.
My nose.
And you don't smoke it. So.
One, one thing that's funny is the day after we approved the book on this last meeting, our current governor died.
Just another day.
Yeah.
It's not the first day. We actually had to borrow two different times, borrow some extra truck. And that one has a constant leak. And even though our, the cable guys tried to fix it, they couldn't. You can always see where they were. You can follow that. So that being said, financials are all in line as, as, as Alan said, so I will close with that.
Thank you, sir. Now it's time to open it back up for appearance and public comment. Please step up your volume. Say your name in that address.
Hey, I'm Rebecca Shedd. I'm three seven one Hazel Avenue, just two shakes of land sale back here. Thank you, council, for letting me speak to you today. I have nothing prepared other than utter emotion. I had heard rumor months ago about this plan and that bids were being placed to get the trees cut down. And it was so sad, so sad. My roots are very, very strong here, not as strong as those trees roots, I'm sure, but my roots are very, very strong here. For seventeen years, I drove to my job in Atlanta to drive back home to Dimrest to be near my space. My mother was a teacher here for forty years. Actually, in this room, it was the first, it was an add-on, my first year of kindergarten. Uh, we were in the gym in like a, so I, I, I helped.
This building, I don't know how old you are.
I'm so young. You are, are you age? It was in the eighties. It was in the eighties, actually. Ms. Wilson was one of my kindergarten teachers and we had this fancy new kindergarten room. And I, back before people realized there was toxoplasmosis.
I want to add, I was Ms. Wilson's first student.
But before that we realized there was toxoplasmosis with, um, sandboxes, there were two sandboxes that sat between those trees and we dug in them all day. I never was diagnosed with toxoplasmosis. Also drank water out of a.
That was the other thing.
Water hose. Yes, does it work? Okay. It's very vintage. But I humbly ask for you, I mean, I have two plans here. I have Plan A and I have Plan B. I humbly ask of you, can we have a Plan C? Did anybody ask how we can work around saving those trees? I mentioned it earlier, the parking lot back behind here, there's not twenty spaces down there. I get it got really busy when Holden opened. Nobody could check their mail after four thirty or you walked like I've done. But I get that. But you have to understand, let's take all things into consideration. People are in and out of the post office. If it's a federal regulation to have twenty spaces.
Not federal, but they, they misquoted that.
Oh, what is it?
It is the International Building Code that assesses where food from the type of business.
Okay.
And it's calculated by the unit years.
They should divide that by the population, but it's okay. Um, that would be our denominator. But no, I mean, seriously, even when court is in, I know that it's kind of, it's kind of cluttered up. I know that it's kind of, it's kind of cluttered up here, I work from home, but there's spaces down there, you know, and I know we have to take into consideration people with physical challenges, we have to take into consideration that, I would say, if we could do something with the parking lot back behind the lunchroom, or across the street from the lunchroom, I just want to humbly ask you, can we please, please, for the love of those trees, we've got many people here, that are here for those trees, we have people that were here before, but they don't see good at night, so they had to go, um, that want to stand up for those trees, and I just really want you to do all that you can, and at least, give us another option, so that you can make a good decision for this community, for you, we're known for our lovely trees, you know, I'm not opposed to change, I'm not, I'm an innovator, that's what I do for a living. But I am opposed to, to doing things with haste, and to me, with these two plans, I don't see an option of what we all want, is to save those trees. So, thank you.
Thanks for speaking.
Yeah.
Listen, this has been something that we've talked about several times, please, oh, please be involved, we appreciate your time, it's like.
Yes.
Rebecca, your last favor.
I don't know, depends on what it is.
Will y'all locate, I will locate another opinion from another arborist, will somebody out here?
Give me a budget, what's my budget? Oh, we don't have budgets in Denver.
Earl didn't know, did he?
Okay, well, who, I'll make a note, who did you ask the first time?
The pastor, Chris James. He is a licensed professional arborist, I, I.
Did you see credentials, did you see certifications?
No.
Okay, well then that's another problem.
Are you saying he's not?
I'm not saying he's not, but I'm not saying he is either.
His numbers and everything on his.
His certification.
He's not a licensed arborist.
Okay, I'm just, I mean.
I'm just asking.
It's a, it's a fair question, it's a fair question.
It's a fair point.
Because when I apply for a job, I'm asked for my credentials.
I'll ask you first, y'all get one too, and I'll get none, I'll have three opinions. Okay, Chris?
Okay.
I have suggestions.
So can I, look, as far as time, because I'm about to leave the country twice, um, back and forth, and then back and forth, so what is the timeframe on, what, what is your, what's the timeframe on this? Will it be after the first week of October?
Sure.
I don't need to, like, I need, like, I'm, I'm a professional.
You're gonna go October seventh week.
I don't know, I'm going to.
But there's somebody can.
I'll, I'll have the, I'll have the Dimrest forces working while I'm gone, and I'll be in communication with them, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? It's ready, it's at the front.
Uh, my name's Leigh Anne Lutz, and, um, I'm at four seventy Ivy Street, which isn't quite finished yet, but we're working hard on finishing our house. Um, I just had a suggestion, if we're trying to get another arborist, um, what about University of Georgia?
Yeah.
Extension.
Yes.
Maybe we could find somebody from there.
Academia, academia.
Well, they, and, and they're just, you know, they.
They're less biased, they're less biased.
And, and they know about all that stuff, they're like, you know, that's really what an extension service does, soil tests, all kinds of stuff, farming, you know, so they probably would have an arborist. And I, and I don't think that's, you know, that's a decent distance, just from Athens to here, so maybe that's something.
That's not a problem.
I agree, well, I agree with your sentiment, that's a great idea.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me in. Who else would like to speak? Yes, mayor?
Thank you very much. Sheena McCullough, uh, I'm eight eighty eight Central Avenue, Dimrest, Georgia, thank you very much, I am here initially because I did hear about the trees out front, and I'm here standing as one right now, but I have others that I have left from this week that are not, maybe will be here because of physical limitations, um, some people, some, a couple of the ladies that I spoke with, that brought this to my attention, are physically limited and cannot leave their homes, they both have been residents of this county far longer than I have, I only aspire to actually be able to have the history that they've shared with me and my family about this lovely town, and it's great to see everyone so passionate about everything that we care about, but I'm, I'm, again, I'm here as one, but I have people here with me, you just don't see them right now, and I want to speak for them, and these people are people that have blended the moral fabric of what we call home today, and I respect them, and you probably have spoken with them, or seen them in passing, or went to school with them, and they do not want what is on the table tonight to happen. I don't either, and I did come here for that issue, but then I heard another topic that I also am very concerned about, and that is, the police department moving from the current location. Forgive me, please, if this has been discussed, and I wasn't here, I apologize, but I am here now, and it weighs heavily on me to think that the Dimrest Police Station would actually move from its current location, for several reasons, one is being that close to the Dimrest Springs Park, which is right down the road, but it's, the police department, if you don't know, is right in front of Dimrest Springs Park, this helps keep our park safe. I believe after ten o'clock at night, the park is vacated, and I see that someone, an officer, goes and does rounds, rounds, to keep that park safe from predators. We have a college campus right next to that park, what about these students? These students have sidewalks, where they commute from building to building, and there's bridges, and there are wetlands, we need protection for our children and our students that are going to, to be upcoming members of, hopefully Dimrest, if we can keep it nostalgic and, and, uh, thriving, we need those officers to protect. In my opinion, I don't think that the station should be moved, why don't we consider taking some of the funds that would have been, uh, for improvements in the designs and the concepts, and allot it to that station so that they can modify the basement, or build up, keep it, keep it where it is, and if the fire department, I don't know, please, I hope I'm not overstepping, if the fire department does not feel that it's best to be here, maybe they want to operate closer to the hospital, maybe they want to be closer to Dimrest Melonary Highway, if they, they, in their entity, feel that it's best for them to serve our community where they are, then we should allot the funds for this to that building, I'm just making a suggestion, I hope that, um.
I really appreciate your suggestions, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
I will first say that our officers are always on the roads, always out in patrol, in patrol on foot lots of times, in very limited times, sitting at their desk in that, in that office, looking over the park, so, even though that they are there, they're always out and about, you see them, lots of cars walking and those things, because I don't necessarily know if they, if it matters where the station's at, because they're always.
That's a really great point, I'm so glad you made that.
Plus, plus the fact that there's another park over there, too.
So if it doesn't matter where the station is, it would be okay if it remained where it was? Maybe.
Thank you for.
Thank you so much.
So.
Anybody else like to speak?
Casey. Can, uh, can I go before him?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, first of all, I just want to say, Chahouchee Mountain Fair starts tomorrow, um, so September through the thirteenth, um, I think it's their fiftieth anniversary, it's their fiftieth anniversary this year, so I encourage everybody to go out and support, support them at, support them at the fairgrounds in Clarksville during that time, uh, also, um, anybody that is interested in history, um, I've got the second iteration of the history room that I'm working on, on that side of the building, over there, and this time, I am the, right now, I'm the interim director of the Havercham Historical Society, and I have all the assets from the Historical Society Museum that was in Cornelia, and will be reopening the museum here, in this building, got all assets, a lot of assets from the county, from the city, a lot of things such as the bathtub that was made here, the saddle tree, a lot of digitized, a lot of documents, but it's a work in progress, I'm hoping to have this reopen within the next couple of months, uh, anybody wants to help, anybody, so, there are a lot of comments I've seen on Facebook about people not thinking about history on this, and some of them, you know, it seems like there's some that have kind of gone overboard with this, and particularly comments about people who are outsiders, so, I'm fourth generation Dimrest, my grand, my father, grandfather, me, and my great-grandfather from here, we go back about a hundred years here, now, there's other people here that's fifth generation, uh, my family's from, moved to Havercham County, one of the first families, um, the settlement in the Koochie Valley, which was then Havercham County in eighteen eighteen, uh, but I, I, I just see that, you know, there's, we all live here, I mean, there's at least three of us on this table right here that went to this school, went fully through this school here, and I just want to say, you know, when I first heard the initial reports of that arborist report, um, I cried, I was crying in his office about it, so, this is not something that you read the comments online that, or just some of them are kind of going overboard with this, uh, and I don't know what else I want to say about that, but, um, I just, hopefully, if anybody wants to help me with the history room, anybody's encouraged, I got, I can do a lot of projects, planning on a lot of different things I would like to do with that.
Remember, before Mr. Charles Peaton died, he was a collector of old Dimrest photos, and I was able to go over and scan a lot, so I might have some stuff that.
Sure, anything, anything, so, you know, one of the things, I'm going off on a complete tangent here, so one of the things I had done, you know, when this school, when this building was closed, this school, there was a Facebook page, uh, for a celebration of this, and a lot of people posted online, uh, class photos, I, I spent, I don't know, a few days going back and downloading every one of those class photos, and I've found some of my own, asked other people that had some, and I've got it, yeah, there's no, I probably maybe have twenty-five percent of the class photos, if that, of everybody that's come through here, um, but, you know, I'm always looking for, you know, any kind of artifacts, or anything that anybody wants to donate, or if anybody has any important documents, even if you don't want to donate, if you just want to scan it and give it to me, you know, anything would be helpful in that, a lot of people talk about history, um, and that's all they do is talk, nobody wants to do anything about it, so, I was, so Stuart Swanson had moved some of the Standard Telephone Company stuff down here to this building, and we were just keeping it in storage, it came from the museum in, in Cornelia, he finally came and.
Telephone car?
Huh?
We have the old telephone car from the parade.
And I don't, no, no, don't have the, I don't know what happened to that, I'll have to ask him about it, but it.
Telephone car.
But anyway, he was, um, moving, finally came and, and got a lot of the stuff, and moved out, and that's kind of spurred me into getting the museum, because I've kind of been sitting on this for about a, about a year, and I apologize to Stuart for that, that it's taken me so long to do it, and I think he said to me that, John, if you weren't doing it, nobody else would be doing that, um, but, it's just me, right now, I mean, I get a lot of sources, a lot of information from Peter Madruga, Havercham History, encourage you to, um, you know, look, he's got a website and Facebook page, I've helped him piece together most of all the Dimrest mayors of, that, that, uh, came through here, up, up through Mr. Hartness, who's playing on his phone. Uh, but hopefully, when.
He had her, he brought a lot of old Fisher Studio photographs.
Sure.
But I probably, and I also got, I mean, that was kind of funny, because it's obviously.
Well, if you, well, if you want to.
I apologize for doing that, if you've gone to Salty and Koochie Culture Center, and they've been able to do, I mean, somebody has to start, it's like, just start, you know, like, it's taking you forever, like.
It's not, it's not, it's not a high-tech thing, I'm, we're talking about here, but, but, you know, a lot of the relics, I mean, you think about Dimrest now, it's not the same as Dimrest when it was founded, um.
The bell's safe there, right?
The bell is in safekeeping right now, um, we may discuss, I think, I think Piedmont, so, the Piedmont hopefully should have saved part of the base, I don't know if the base is salvageable or not on there, but.
It's partially.
It's partially salvage, you know where it is?
Yeah.
Okay, I know where the bell is, I don't know where the.
I know where it all is, it's in two different locations.
Well, he knows where, he knows where part, he knows where part of it is, and I only know where the bell is.
Well.
It's split up.
The reason it's split up, because the tree fell on it, and we hadn't let Piedmont clean it up, because it was on their property, so we were able to get the bell out, but the other parts of the setup were underneath the tree.
Bell of a place.
Thank, thank, uh, Brian and his crew, because, uh, you know, I've lived here my entire life, I've never rung that bell until a couple of years ago, and then I realized what a mistake that was, ringing that bell, because that thing is so heavy, that once you start, it doesn't stop, so if you ring that bell at noon, everybody that's in town looks at you. That's, that's no longer more, but hopefully, we can work with Piedmont to find, you know, a, a location suitable for that bell, and those that don't know the history of that, um, that bell was donated by, um, uh, Jennings Dimrest, who was the namesake for the, for the town, when he moved, when he visited one time, uh, he brought the bell, and he brought a, um, a flag, too, and I have not been able to figure out where that flag is. If anybody knows where that flag is, please let me know, because I'd love to.
Between the two oak trees out here would be a nice place.
[laughing].
A new bell stand.
Well, if, if someone, if someone knows where the flag is, you know, it, I think it kind of belongs to the city, uh, otherwise, I don't know, the last time it was seen was.
The flag up.
The United States flag.
Oh, the American.
Yeah, I imagine it probably has forty-six stars from that point, um, but I hadn't seen it, anyway, I'm just rambling, so, hopefully, when I get the history room open, I'll let people know.
Thank you. You're up.
I wanted to introduce y'all, Ms. Erin Irvin, she is our intern from Piedmont College.
University.
Piedmont University, excuse me, she is, uh, studying criminal justice, and to be an intern. And to be an intern with us, she had to go through a lot of the same things we do. We, she had to take a security and awareness class and that stuff. She has a post number, the same as all of us, our officers do, except hers is a civilian number. So she is able to ride with us and, and hear the radio traffic, and see the GCIC stuff, that's, that's awful confidential. So, uh, she's been with us for a couple of weeks now, and she will be here with us till December. She comes up, uh, three times a week, she rides with the guys. Uh, today, she got to look at some videos that, that we have, that, of cases, and, uh, that are, to point out some things that she sees wrong and sees right, so... But we're happy to have her, she's a, she's fit in with, uh, all our guys and, and the ladies in the office really well. So she's, uh, she's part of us now, so, just wanted y'all to introduce, introduce her to y'all.
Thank you.
Are you from the big city?
Big city, yeah, I'm from the area.
Oh, yes, pretty big city.
Where, Indiana?
Indiana, yeah. Uh, so we'll just say you're diversifying your experience. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So when you're, you're extending, okay.
Oh, wow.
Wow. What's your impression of the difference? No, you don't have to tell us.
The media's here, Sean.
What?
The media's here.
I know, I see. You don't have to tell us. What's your impression of the place? Here's some public comments. Do you have anything else?
Welcome.
All right, I'm done here, what's your second question to adjourn? Orderly going executive session, I mean.
Oh, boy.
All right, put it in the room. Thank you, sir, second. All those in favor?